Ladies and gentlemen, it is my honor and privilege to call to order the City Commission meeting. It is 3 o'clock on October 28th. And colleagues, I don't know about you, but I'm pretty excited to be in chambers today. And I think staff has done a tremendous job setting up the room, putting together the protocols, and keeping us all very safe. To begin our meeting, I would like to call on Pastor Jeremy Roberts, my friend of Thomasville Road Baptist Church, who will lead us in the invocation, and I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance immediate thereafter. Please stand with me, Pastor Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lord, we pray that as today, we are just one week away from an election, and we need unity in our community and in our country. Lord, even as our church has a special day of focus right now on racial unity and healing, we pray, Lord, for our community of Tallahassee to be a place that is healthy and that is healing from this pandemic. Lord, we pray that you would give wisdom to our City Commission, as they make important decisions that affect all of us here. We do pray for racial unity in our community, Lord. Lord, we also pray for those who are hurting with mental health needs, and they need help, and we pray, Lord, that you would give them favor and encouragement. Lord, we pray that today, that you would make it where, even though inevitably disagreements come in business meetings, we pray that people would agree to disagree agreeably for the sake of unity, for the city of Tallahassee, and for your glory, Lord. We love you, God, and we thank you that we have the freedom of religion to be able to worship you through prayer, and to be able to pledge our allegiance as well to the flag. We love you, Lord, in whose name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Pastor Roberts, thank you very much for joining us. Certainly do appreciate it. So, ladies and gentlemen, we have a very special meeting today. We have a called City Commission meeting. We have a called CRA meeting, and we have a public hearing at 6 o'clock. The agenda is not too, too burdensome. We will be able to make it through all of our agendas on all of our meetings. Commissioner Richardson, it's good to see you, sir.
Good to see you, sir.
Nope, got you. Nope, you're good. You're fine. And so, it's a first. We are going to have two meetings and a public hearing. Ladies and gentlemen, it's also a first. It's the first meeting back for several months since we've been out for COVID. I am asking everybody to work with us. Our staff has done a tremendous job putting together the safety protocols. Let's set the example on how this can be done, and this can be done right. Yes, it might take a little time getting people in and out of the room. Yes, we might move a little slower so that we are safe. Yes, please wear your masks while you are in chambers and in City Hall. But nonetheless, we're going to get through today. I think we'll get through with no major problems, and it's going to be a wonderful meeting. Finally, today is also a first. Today starts the beginning of a new way that we take public comment. From this time forward, we will be taking comment both in person, along with virtually, and over the phone. It is very important that we allow the public to participate in their meetings, in all of our meetings, and we're going to do it to the best of our ability. And one of the bright lines of COVID has shown us that we can do it with the technology that we have. But once again, this is the first meeting where we're in chambers together. We're going to have public participation virtually and in person, and I'm just asking everybody today, let's take a deep breath, let's work together, and just know that it might go a little slower than we usually do so that we get it right. With that, Mr. City Manager, do we have any agenda modifications for the meeting today?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, we do. Item 1102 involving the Tallahassee Human Relations Committee was added to your meeting material yesterday, as well as the attachment to item 12.01 involving the voluntary annexation petition, parcel ID 112620007000 has been updated.
Excellent. Colleagues, any questions for the City Manager on the agenda for modifications? Okay, moving forward. Ladies and gentlemen, we do have a very special presentation today, and I'm going to ask Mr. Steve Winkie, the Managing Partner of AAC Utility Partners, to please join us at the microphone for his presentation.
Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, thank you so very much for this opportunity to present AAC's Young Navigator Award today. Young Navigator program was, and also, let me just say also too, I first skipped over and recognize also Mr. James Barnes. Casey, Director of the Boys and Girls Club, thank you very much. Your hard work is certainly paying off in partnership with AAC to help present and help our students gain or achieve their goals. The Young Navigator program was established in partnership with our clients to help students chase their educational dreams. And also, part of this program is to help them when they're chasing their educational dreams to provide some type of financial assistance. We worked with the Boys and Girls Club through this program, and had them write an essay on why utilities are important in this community. And today, I'm extremely excited to recognize Anye, which will come up here in a minute, for an excellent essay, and to present her a check and a certificate so that Anye can chase her educational dream, attend FSU. So, I think that's really, really cool that she's, good job on that, Anye. And I also like to say too, thank you very much for the other participants. We had a large number of participants here, and we're also providing them with a certificate as well, so I'll give that to you as well, Casey. And so with that, I'd like to say thank you very much for the opportunity.
All right. Steve, are you going to do the presentation?
Yes, sir.
All right. And Allison, why don't you set us up appropriately?
(inaudible)
Excellent. Anye, would you like to make a few comments? The microphone is yours. And please introduce your family that is with us as well.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I would like to say thank you to the Youth Navigators Program for giving us opportunity because I was definitely excited and happy to know that I'm getting closer to my goal as of college-wise. So, I'm going to be using this money to definitely go towards my books and stuff for school, and thank you again.
Anye, would you like to make a few comments? The microphone is yours. And please introduce your family that is with us as well.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I would like to say thank you to the Youth Navigators Program for giving us opportunity because I was definitely excited and happy to know that I'm getting closer to my goal as of college-wise. So, I'm going to be using this money to definitely go towards my books and stuff for school, and thank you again.
Excellent. Congratulations.
Anye, who do you have with you today?
Mayor Protem.
I have my mom, right here, Ms. Davis, and my grandmother, Ms. Cheryl Howard.
All right. Excellent. Congratulations. We're very proud of you. And Steve, thank you very much. We certainly do appreciate your presentation, and welcome back to Tallahassee. Mr. Manager, do we have any announcements today?
No, sir, we do not.
Okay, we are now on citizen input on agenda items. Now, I know that as seats are opening up, our staff will be escorting people in as well that will be participating. So, Mr. Treasurer Clerk, we are going to do, those that are here in person first, who speak on agended items. We will have the opportunity for unagended items at the end of the meeting, as we always do.
Yes, sir.
After we go through those that are with us in person, we will do virtual and on the phone, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Are you going to call out, say, three at a time, so we have a speaker and staff knows to, I'm sure you already have this worked out. I'm not even going to get involved with your system. You go right ahead, Jim.
As you said at the beginning of the meeting, Mayor, we've put a lot of effort into making sure this goes smoothly, but this is our first time through it, so we will work with you as the Commission and our citizens as well to make sure everybody is heard. As the mayor mentioned, we are taking input in person as well as virtually. We also continue to receive written comment. We received eight comments. Six of those were on the agended items, 1202, 1204, 1501, and 1502. Those were distributed to the City Commission previously, and also posted to our agenda for the public to see. There were a couple of unagended comments as well that are included there. As the mayor said, we will first hear from persons here in the chambers. When I call speakers' names, we'll use the microphone that you've just seen for the presentation. We ask, as you speak, there's a place marked on the floor for you to stand. You should not need to touch the microphone. It is live and situated such that as long as you're standing in the designated spot, you should be very clearly heard by everyone, so we appreciate that. We will give three minutes for each item. I believe, I know some of our folks who signed up to speak online, as well as I think a couple of our in-person folks have asked to speak on multiple items. Normally, we would allow you to speak as each item arises, but just for a better flow, we're going to have everyone make all of their comments here at the beginning of the meeting. So if someone has signed up to speak on two items, you'll get three minutes for each item, but we would like you to remain at the microphone for your items, and I'll introduce those as you're called. And I believe with that, if speakers also would start their comments with their name and address for the record, we will begin hearing from those who are here in person. Our first speaker will be Stanley Sims, and then we will hear from Joe Erp and Tawana Thompson. Stanley Sims is speaking on item 1102, your citizen appointment, as well as 1302, a housing item. You'll see a green light directly in front of Commissioner Richardson there when your time begins. It's set for three minutes, so I will restart that since you have two items. Okay?
Mr. Sims, good to see you, sir.
Good to see, good to be seen too, Mr. Mayor.
And now, which one am I talking on first?
1102 is the citizen appointment for the Tallahassee Human Relations Committee, and then the second one was the housing item.
Good evening, Commission. So glad to be here. I really want to also echo the mayor's comment, City Manager's race, of what the staff has done. But if y'all don't believe them, y'all can believe me. Come on down here. They got good signage. They got good space. They got accommodations. People here to help you. If you hear the instructions that was given, they are listening to you. So, come on down here. It's safe. Now, about the appointment, I'm very pleased with the appointment that I've seen. There is one suggestion, Mr. Mayor, that I'd love for you all to add. You're now taking on people for the police thing. You got to bear with me for a minute. For the council, for the police. Yes, thank you, sir, thank you. And so, Commissioner Richardson, what I'm suggesting, Mayor, is that whoever serves on that committee also has a seat on this committee because the two are so directly tied together, as well as, and I don't mean to offend anyone, but I also think you should add your board, that LGB, you know them letters, on there as well. And I also would like for you to add someone that actually is talking about the impacts of race in our community. I'm just saying, expound that so that you are opening up these doors so that we can understand what's going on. So, I don't have a problem with that process. I'm just asking for the expansion of that process. And that is, Mayor Protem, in conjunction with some of the things that they are doing in Winter Garden, and also up north in DC. My...
My other thing is what?
Item 1302, which is described as authorization to certify the Orange Avenue Affordable Housing Redevelopment Project.
Okay, you're going to hit the green button?
Yes, sir. You can count on me.
Y'all see what COVID do? I could even go earlier when I didn't get this. All right, you ready? All right. The housing, Mayor Protem, you brought this to my attention. I'm excited to see low-income housing come to our area. But here is the confusion that we often have. What is low-income housing, and what is affordable, oh, no, let me take that back. What is your definition of low-income housing, and what is your definition of affordable housing? And then you got inclusionary housing, and then you got low-income urban housing. And so, we got all these buzz housing, making things that poor folks could get somewhere to stay. But if you really look at it, Mr. Jeremy, urban, urban low-income housing, you got to be making $40,000 a year, $50,000. Those are for our schoolteachers, our police officers. But our affordable housing, we need housing that when someone makes minimum wage, they can work 40 hours, live there and pay their light bill. That's what I call low-income housing. And I'm very pleased that Tallahassee is doing that. And my only, I know, Mayor, I was on a good road till I started here. Only issue I got, when I was able, my partners here in Tallahassee to travel abroad, and Commissioner Richardson, I shared with you that it wasn't just we were marching in DC. Those other days, Mayor Protem, we were strategizing, exchanging information. And what they were talking about there is, they're asking their city local government to rethink how they redistribute dollars in our communities of color, especially our deprived economic areas. And so, I'm asking this commission now to not stop getting creative. I'm not going to murder her name. You, Mayor. She's thinking outside of the box. I'd love to see the housing people get out of that building and get into the community. I don't want Griffin Heights to be a resting place. I like Griffin Heights to be a stepping place. I'm in the process now, Commissioner Matlow, of trying to set up to go my own dollar to look at the purpose bill and talk to Ms. Keith.
You're at your three minutes.
Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Our next speaker.
Come on down here, stay.
Next speaker is Joe Erp, and then Tawana Thompson, and Carrie Litherland. Joe Erp on item 1302.
Good to see you, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
Joe Erp, 3022 Brandemere Drive, Tallahassee, Florida, 32312. I really just want to say thank you so much, and it is great to see all you in person now. And thank you so much to Abena and all the other partners in supporting this, and I do agree that this is a great thing that's going on down there, and we hope to see it through. Appreciate your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker.
Next is Tawana Thompson, then Carrie Litherland, and Donna Legar.
Ms. Thompson, you name and address for the record, please. Good to see you.
Good afternoon. Tawana Thompson, 2940 Grady Road. I'm Director of Development, Tallahassee Housing Authority, and we ask your support of the designation of our property as a low-income area of opportunity, not low-income, local government area of opportunity. I'd also like to thank all of you and your staff for the work that you've done, holding our hand through this process and getting us to this point. And to Stanley's point, affordability can be relative, but this will certainly be a property that Tallahassee can be proud of, that a number of our residents and citizens can benefit from. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Kup. Ms. Litherland, good to see you. Your name and address for the record, please.
As she approaches, our next few speakers are on item 1501, which is one of your CRA items. You'll adjourn and reconvene as the CRA later, but we'll go ahead and take these speakers now as well. And she'll be followed by David Arnold.
Yes, ma'am.
Good afternoon. My name is Carrie Litherland, and I live at 1336 Jackson Street. I'm currently the Chair of the Alliance of Tallahassee Neighborhoods, or as many of you guys know us as, ATN. On behalf of ATN, I wanted to thank staff, specifically Karen and Mindy, for working with us on the 440 site plan. The history of the 440 project and the CRA involvement are clearly outlined in your agenda item. We were all hopeful that due to the direction given by the CRA Board, the development team would understand the importance of not only preserving the Virginia Street live oak, but incorporating the trees' needs, spaces' needs into the site plan design. Unfortunately, this just did not come to fruition. We were alerted to the 440's project request for five deviations late in the summer of this year. ATN and ATN-member neighborhoods separately reached out to staff about concerns over the deviation request, specifically as they impacted the tree. Staff assured us that since Mindy had not yet been involved in the process, they would continue the discussion of the site plan to the next meeting. As such, ATN member Kathy McGuire attended the meeting and spoke in support of the continuation of the item. However, to everyone's shock, after concluding the public speaking segment of the meeting, staff instead offered to approve the site plan and deviations with conditions, including an all-clear from Mindy on the developer's mitigation plan for the Virginia Street live oak. I wholeheartedly acknowledge that what is sometimes referred to impersonally as city staffers are human beings, and they occasionally make process missteps. However, in this instance, the misstep was pretty significant. It prohibited public comment on the site plan. I implore you as a board to direct our City Manager to ensure that this misstep never happens again. After this, myself and the ATN Vice Chair Sean met with the City Manager and waned at her to implore them to host another public meeting so the public had a real chance to be heard on this site plan, as many felt this opportunity was denied by the actions taken at the DRC meeting. Thankfully, they did agree to host a public Zoom meeting to discuss the revised site plans and tree mitigation plans. Once the recent middle of the site plan was received, ATN members, Appalachia Audubon, the developer's representative, and the city staff met to discuss the application. Both ATN and Appalachia Audubon had questions that staff promised to answer before getting final approval to the site plan to move forward. We did receive our questions, answers to all of our questions and comments, and while we might not agree on the final conditions, we appreciate the work staff did to mitigate damage to the tree as much as they could with their current limited ability. We especially appreciate Mindy's commitment to ensure compliance with the conditions regarding the Virginia Street live oak. Going forward, we hope in the next year to strengthen our city codes and ordinances to give staff the ability to do more when it comes to protection of trees on or near development sites. We hope this too will become a priority of yours. I would encourage you all to consider, Debbie Lightsey, I hope she can speak, we don't know if she's going to be able to speak today, but she has some comments regarding the approval of the extension that I hope you'll consider. We also hope that each of you will keep a close eye on this project, as we intend to do as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
David Arnold, followed by Donna Legar, both on the same item.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, Mr. Goode. My name is David Arnold. I live at 2240 Jefferson Road, Tallahassee. Today, I'm speaking on my own behalf and also for Appalachia Audubon. I want to take you back to June of 1959. Just right down the road here, the Tallahassee Federal Savings and Loan Association opened a brand-new office on the corner of East Carolina and North Monroe, which is the block where 440 is now going to be redeveloping. That wonderful new building was a very special place, and there were lots of huge live oaks all over that block. Today, if you go down Adams Street, you'll notice there's still live oaks, which provide shade and a canopy on the sidewalk as you're walking towards the governor's mansion. But unfortunately, only two other large oaks remain on that lot because so much of it's been developed as a parking area. Item 15.01 of the CRA agenda is an extension of time for an out-of-town developer partnership, commonly referred to 440 North Development, to be able to get their permits and commence with their project. You've seen this project before and given approval for over $4 million of tax money reimbursement to developers. Last year, as you just heard, a number of us got together and commented on this project, worked with city staff, trying to protect the large 50-inch diameter oak, which is currently standing there at Virginia and North Monroe Street. Unfortunately, we believe that the current site plan is going to cause irreparable harm to the oak tree. There's just no reason that the applicant should be allowed to remove over 50% of the remaining green space that that tree has for its root system. They should not be allowed to cut out over 15% of the canopy to make way for housing units right near that tree. There's a whole city block to redevelop, to place those units elsewhere within the footprint, and indeed, the 2019 plans did not have housing at that location. Instead, they had a driveway to an underground parking lot, which they removed in order to not impact the tree. But the driveway got replaced with housing units. We believe that this just is not consistent with what has already been adopted in the Urban Forest Master Plan, the Land Development Code, and also because this is within the downtown overlay and multimodal transportation district, large shade trees are something that there's just not enough of anymore in the downtown area. I know previously, Commissioner Richardson has been concerned about striking the right balance between tree protection and the essential development in the downtown area to bring about the vision for that. This is one of those cases where you can have a win-win solution. If that tree's protected, minimal amount of trimming, they'll have a showpiece dining area with a large number of canopy limbs down. That tree will be there to provide shade, and as people are coming down North Monroe, they'll look over there and see that huge tree and say, wow, isn't Tallahassee beautiful? And after all, we have been a Tree City USA for 28 years. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Donna Legar, and then Charles Gardner. Mr. Gardner will be our last speaker of the in-person speakers.
It's so good to see you. Your name and address for the record, please.
I am Donna Legar. My address is 2239 Ellicock Drive, 32308. I'm here representing myself, and also I am the President of Appalachia Audubon Society. I want to reiterate that we have been giving input about the preservation of this tree since I first saw an article about the proposed development in April of 2019. And I want to thank the Tallahassee Democrat for having that article, because otherwise I wouldn't have known about it. From the beginning, we indicated our support of this project, bringing housing to downtown, but we wanted full protection of this tree. You have heard from David Arnold, who just spoke, also representing Appalachia Audubon, so I won't duplicate what he has presented. And I think he gave you, mailed a, or emailed you a copy of our recommendations. All I can say is that if we can't protect a tree of this stature, stature, one that is healthy and growing on the very edge of this proposed development, it's not like in the middle of the property, it's right on the edge, probably on city property, providing shade and habitat and visual beauty, not to mention its value as a carbon sink and other ecological functions, then we as a community have failed to do our job. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk.
Charles Gardner.
Mr. Gardner, welcome. Your name and address for the record, please.
(inaudible) I can hear better than I can.
We can hear you.
These masks make it difficult. I'm not a tree expert, but one thing that I have noticed, the city of Tallahassee has a tree expert in Mindy. We have done everything that Mindy has asked us to do. We redesigned that project to save that tree. The tree has a sidewalk that actually touches the base on the south side, a few feet away. A few feet away on the north side is a big retaining wall. So we know there are no roots that go through that retaining wall into the open air. This, this is a project that, I've been doing this 46 years. For at least 30 years, I've heard that Tallahassee wants this type of downtown project. COVID has delayed it a little bit, made it a little bit more difficult to get things done. But this is a phenomenal project for downtown Tallahassee. We've done everything we can to communicate with the different groups that wanted information, including Zoom calls, asked an hour-plus, where we had city staff present. We had the consultants present, and we answered every question that was thrown at us. I think we've done a, we, the consultants and clients, have done a really, really good job to make this project something that people of Tallahassee will like. And I'll, I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. We appreciate it.
Could you provide your name and address, please?
If I can hear him.
Your, Mr. Gardner, your name and address for the record, please.
Your name, sir. They want your name and your address.
For the record.
For the record.
In the mic.
They want your name and your address.
Oh, oh, okay. Charles Gardner, 1300 Thomas Wood Drive, Tallahassee, Florida.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Gardner.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any other public comment in person, Mr. Cook?
Mr. Mayor, I have no other request for citizens to speak in person. I do have names for the virtual speakers.
Let's move forward with the virtual speakers, please.
We will move to the, the virtual speakers. Those should connect, and I believe we will see those on these, on our screens here as we begin this portion of the meeting. Mayor and Commissioners, we have about, I believe, six speakers. Several of these, as with a couple of the ones here in person, have asked to speak on multiple items, so when I introduce the speaker, I'll let you know which items they're speaking on. So our first speaker will be Jeff Blair, speaking on items 1202, 1203, and 1204. All three of those are introductions of ordinance related to the Waloney Arch. And for the speaker, who will not be able to see the timer that we have here in the chambers, with three items, that'll be nine minutes, and I'll give you, I'll verbally let you know when you're at eight minutes, so you have a minute to wrap it up. Obviously, if all of the comments are similar on all three items, the speaker does not have to use all nine minutes.
Mr. Blair, thank you for joining us virtually. Your name and address for the record, please, and you may begin.
Thank you. My name's Jeff, my name's Jeff Blair, living at 1803 Old Fort Drive in Tallahassee, Florida. I'm not going to even use three minutes. I'm going to reserve most of my comments for, for the adoption hearing. But what I would like to say, and I think, Mr. Mayor, if I heard you correctly, you may have already addressed one of my primary comments, and that's that the city, at least, intends to continue real-time virtual public comment, whether meetings are being held face-to-face or in person. This is a big issue for, for me and for Keep It Rural and for others, and we have been advocating since April that this be the case. I think it's critical that the Waloney Arch Master Plan adoption hearing be, provide for real-time virtual comment. There's very, there's many people who do not feel safe, and I put myself in that category, and certainly I'll put Pam Hall in that category, to attend a virtual meeting at this time and place. As you know, we just had the largest, the longest seven-day stretch increase in pandemic since the pandemic began, so we're not exactly climbing out of this, and I think it's not really safe for a lot of people to feel comfortable. So at that, I would appreciate if that's the case, and it's not just for during the pandemic, but going forward. What else I was gonna, I want to talk about is that we are, would like you to encourage staff to continue to work with stakeholders on addressing the issues that were brought up during the workshop, and that we are working with staff on the alternative developer program and park system, and that Keep It Rural continues and will continue to support addressing the issues and concerns that are expressed by ATN, the Clareham Hunters Association, and Buckhead. So we stand with them in that regard in terms of making sure that the Waloney Arch Master Plan is a comprehensive document that actually provides the guidance required across all planned PUDs, and, and we want to see that happen, and we hope we can continue to work in that direction. But I really can't speak to the exact document now since it's not final, and so those comments I'll reserve for that time. And we will continue to advocate for transparency, fairness, equity, and using public resources for private benefit, for good growth and development practice that encourage diverse housing types and affordable inclusionary opportunities, walkability, safe pedestrian cycling, parks, greenway, alternative transportation and energy choices. And we will continue to work with stakeholders and with our, our staff and city government to accomplish this. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clerk.
Next speaker is Randy Denker, also speaking on items 1202, 1203, and 1204, also wishing to comment on item 1501, again, one of your CRA items.
Mr. Denker, thank you for joining us. We appreciate it. Your name and address for the record, please. I believe you're muted.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioners. Randy Denker, 552 East Georgia Street. And I guess it doesn't really matter which order I address these in, so let me talk about Waloney first. I have pared down my requests to two items, you'll be happy to know. And the first is that I would like to ask you to support the work that Pam Hall has done with Keep It Rural to do the park that she has described. I understand from speaking with her that they are talking to staff and making some progress, and I hope the Commission will support that in every possible way, because I think what she's doing is really visionary and would be a wonderful addition to our city. The second ask is, I'm asking the city to keep its promise to the citizens in CIRCA, the Centerville Rural Community Association, and find an alternative route for the road that does not go through and destroy the conservation easement that was promised to them as a result of the settlement of the lawsuit back in the early part of this millennium. So that's really all I have to say. Waloney, and I'd ask you to give your, your support to both of those items. Now, the 440 item is the other thing that I wanted to address today. And I, if this tree is not protected, then I think we need to completely overhaul our tree protection ordinance, which is perhaps a, a discussion for another day. But we have really got to protect our, our legacy trees, and this is one of them. It's healthy, it's there, and I remind you all that this is, this tree doesn't belong to the developers. This tree is on city right-of-way. This is a city tree. This belongs to the city and to the citizens. And it adds a lot of value to downtown. And I, I've sent a written comments, I hope you've all had a chance to read them, but trees are really our best allies in the fight against climate change. They provide so much for free. They, they provide beauty, they provide shade, they, they filter our air, they remove CO2, they buffer noise, they lower utility bills, they provide habitat for birds and animals, runoff control, cleaning the runoff. They even, they even help our mental health and our mood when we see trees, instead of just looking at concrete all the time. And trees are really our most cost-effective allies in reaching our carbon neutrality goals. So the city should not only be nurturing the old trees, but planting a lot of new trees. But when we take down an old tree and we plant, and we require the developer to plant some new trees as litigation, it's really not an equal exchange, because the old trees, being much, much older and much larger, remove and store much more carbon than small trees. So they're not interchangeable. Trees are not interchangeable, so we have to protect the ones that we have. And the 440 project is a good place to start. This developer knew when, when, when it bought this site, what was there, knew there was a large tree, knew that it had to be, it was a protected tree, and should have designed its, its, its buildings so as to protect this tree. What I am being told by the experts I've spoken to is that over time, if there is this much trimming of the canopy, this tree will eventually go into decline, and it will eventually die, and then it will have to be removed at taxpayers' expense because it will be dangerous. So let's not stress the tree out, let's protect it, and ask the developer to redesign the project. It's a big site. It's an entire city block. There's room to do it all. And I'm excited about the project. I love the idea of more residential and commercial mixed use downtown. I think that's great planning, but it's not good planning if it destroys a tree in the process. So I'm asking you to ask the, ask them to go back to the drawing board and come up with a design that doesn't impact this tree. I think that's what the, the public wants, and I think that's what the neighborhoods want. And as the President of Lafayette Park Neighborhood Association, we have taken position of asking that this tree be protected. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, our next speaker.
Next speaker is Stephen Martin, as with our previous speakers, on 1202, 1203, and 1204. Stephen Martin.
Mr. Martin, your name and address for the record, please.
Mute myself. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Thank you for joining us.
Okay. All right. I had wanted to speak at the meeting on October 13th, but didn't learn about it until it was too late or about registering in time. Yeah, I've had, I've had a lot to say about Waloney development for a long time. You've seen me before, Mr. Mayor, in a different office, in a different building about this, when I've come and talked to you about it, and have actually gotten you, in that capacity, to agree with me to some extent that some of the initiatives taken with this were not the way they should have been. I talked to you about the annexation and having to de-annex a strip of land in order to make the annexation of the plantation legal. That's not what's supposed to be done, and I've got letter from the county attorney to the city attorney pointing that out. City manager, I don't know if you recall this, but I went, and you were Assistant City Manager at that time, our interim, and I went up and I had a meeting with you and former city attorney Lou Shelley, as well as Mr. Norville. And when I talked about the de-annexation and asked former city attorney Lou Shelley about it, his response was, everything we did was legal. When I then asked him, but did it abide by the spirit of the statute? He snapped back at me and said, I don't care about that. All I can tell you is, we didn't do anything illegal. Yeah, the impression I've gotten over the years is that whatever the parties behind this can legally get away with, they will get away with and hope that nobody comes and does anything thereafter about it. But I thought that that really missed the purpose. The spirit of the law is what I'd like to think matters. I'd like to think that. Now, speaking of law, Mr. Hunter, who's an attorney, I beg to differ with Gary Hunter when he says that this has been a smooth process over the last 30 years, that it's been an open process over the last 30 years. As I said, I have followed this for the last 12 years closely, and I question both of those. I attended three of the charrettes this summer. Artie White, I see who's there. I think he'll probably remember this, the first one I attended, which Mr. Hunter was not at. So when he said on October 13th that he attended them all, that is not 100% honest. He was not at this one, because I asked if he was. Well, Mr. Volpe was, and so I started to ask Mr. Volpe about it, and he said, it's been a smooth process. And then I read some of the newspaper headlines about what's happened with Canopy. Residents cry foul as Canopy Pond floods the road, state agency calls for halt, DEP sues. I mean, I started doing that, and then I got kind of cut off. But I'm just trying to make the point that this hasn't been a smooth process. And as I said at that charrette, that if the people behind this could acknowledge that there have been problems, that they can show, that they can understand why people are concerned about this, because what's happened in the past is often the best predictor about what will happen in the future. So I just pointed that out and said, I don't think it's asking too much for them to acknowledge there have been problems. Then it's more likely that those of us who are concerned about what's going to happen thereafter on Waloney might believe that these people understand why we're concerned. But when Mr. Hunter continues to claim he does not understand, and this is all some last-minute attempt by them, he's missing the point. And my hunch is, he doesn't understand why we are not happy with what's happened with Canopy development. So I, I just think it would, I invite anybody who wants to tell me that this development of Waloney Plantation that includes Canopy development has been a smooth process without any problems, and there's no reason for anybody who's followed it to not be concerned about what's going to happen in the future. Now, I just, I mean, I, I don't know where to go with this. So much of this comes down to core values, and some of us value what others don't value. The Sales Tax Committee, Mr. Evans at the meeting and earlier said, oh, the Sales Tax Committee thoroughly vetted Northeast Gateway and proposed development of Waloney, and doesn't understand why there's any need for additional input. The people on the Sales Tax Committee have very different values than many of the rest of us, or some of the rest of us. What some of us see as undisturbed land, not needing to be disturbed, is perceived by others as being undeveloped land in need of development. And I think that captures the Sales Tax Committee. No one on that committee objected to the Northeast Gateway. No one on it objected to the Northeast Gateway. Yet you've seen the response of the community to it. Everybody from that committee who spoke earlier this month was in favor of this development, didn't understand why there needed to be any more public input, and thought there had already been too much public input. Yeah, well, they were amongst their own ilk at that Sales Tax Committee, and for them to come to an agreement doesn't mean that others are necessarily going to agree with them. In the future, I would strongly recommend on these committees to put people who were opposed from the beginning. Blueprint, yeah, you keep saying it was supported by 65% of those who voted for it, but the majority of people didn't vote for it. More people didn't vote for it than did vote for it. In 2000, I supported Blueprint because I didn't know much about it, and I thought it was there to manage and control growth. Now I know Blueprint is there to promote growth. I didn't support it in 2014. Quite a bit's been brought forth, made apparent to the public this year. I'd imagine that if we had a Blueprint vote now, it would not pass because people now realize stuff about it they didn't before. Earlier this year, article about the man behind the curtain. Yeah, there's a few folks behind the curtain, working with this developer at the other end of the plantation. Mr. Hunter keeps saying, oh, there's no developers yet for the arch. The developers of Canopy didn't come out from behind the curtain until well after they were going to be developers. This allowed them to do actions where they didn't have to disclose conflicting interest, like when one of them was put on, was able to get on the Northwest Florida Water Management District Board when issues related to Dove Pond were coming before them back in the 2000s. Yeah, they didn't want to disclose anything so they could get away with stuff. Later, a planning commissioner who was behind this was put on the planning commission without disclosing on his application about his ties to the developer. And I spoke to you about this, Mayor. At the time, you kind of concurred with this. He left the planning commission only to get reappointed again, and even though you didn't nominate him the second time, you did support it again. That's Tim Edmund, the same person who, in front of the city commission in February 2011. None of you were there. I don't know if Mr. Cook was sitting up on the dais then, and maybe Mr. Goode was in the back corner then.
Mr. Martin, you're near, you're near the end of your time.
I thought I was supposed to have nine minutes.
You, that's correct. You've used over eight. I'm just giving you a heads up.
Okay, thank you. All right. Tim Edmund made the comment in front of the commission, and I don't know if you were there, and if you remember this, Mr. Cook, you're certainly welcome to respond about it. He said he wants to protect God's gift. He said that about what's now Canopy. So you want to tell- So you want to tell me that there isn't any reason for people to be concerned? We have not been given the truth about this in the past, and why should I think now that what Mr. Hunter is telling us is truthful? All right. Thank you for allowing me to -- I thought I was only going to have three minutes, in fact, but thank you. And as I say, I'm completely against this.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Our next speaker, Mr. Cook.
Next speaker is Debbie Danton, also on these same three items.
Ms. Danton, your name and address for the record, please. Thanks for joining us. You're muted, Ms. Danton.
Can you hear me?
No, we can't, yes. Yes, you may begin, give your name and address, and you may begin.
Okay. Good afternoon, Commissioner. Debbie Danton, 106 Frank Shaw Road, and I'm here representing the Walani Orange Commission in the master plan. And I'm trying to make this simple. This is a master project. We do not understand what the traffic impact will be. Traffic seems to be treated differently. Policy applies to the address transportation needs. It refers to the like I said to you last night in the conference. I'm not here to discuss the problem. I use stop clause. It is not intended to stop development, but what we want to do is set a threshold for when transportation models should be ready to evaluate this project. We know transportation changes are achievable. We have a future mobility plan, mobility B, enhanced transit, micro mobility, automated connected vehicles, Vision Zero, workroom, changes in population growth expectations, and the new interchange. All these will affect the travel patterns. So we're requesting a baseline plan to evaluate all the development in the master plan. It is a code change in the model that we request. Once you've got stormwater codes installed, you know how to policy the storm. It must be going in for the Walani Orange or any place. While you're proceeding with the Walani Boulevard and Shamont South, it's also twice any different from the Walani project. So we also have questions about the process. You know, this is the applicant area. The landowners seem to be dictating what the city policy will be. I don't recall this ever in the past, or how they're -- we'll say local government and how we are projecting. Maybe it's because the city's also trying to set a standard for how the city's 430 acre pud that's located between the county and the Walani Orange will be evaluated in the future. We recently read the transportation language in the master plan policy 13.2.3, which says puds can sit previous pud, don't know what that means, consist, it must be consistent with transportation plans, which it may address a portion of previous puds or not, based on the fire in January. So we now know, so to me, it sounds, instead of developing a transportation monitoring plan, that the puds have to adhere to, that the puds are being approved of transportation being a problem. So let's say, consider your real world experience. We are not asking for a model based, we just are asking for a model based on what the PUDs are. The currency is not a thing. Currency does not treat all developers alike, doesn't pay for future purchase needs, and last guy can pay to live in. So in terms of, we need a plan to evaluate this region. Get it right and be happy to work with you. And I'll just tell you, as the development occurs every next step, you --
Ms. Danton, you do have a few minutes remaining, but I want to let you know that your connection is not very good, and so, as a matter of fact, we lost you for a moment.
Can you tell me where you lost me?
Just in, you're fine. Keep going.
We only lost you as I was speaking, so you can continue.
Jim, yeah. Go ahead, Ms. Danton, keep going.
Well, I'm, we would like to talk with your staff, work some language, we provided some transportation language, and we'd like to continue working on that. And I just think that trying to get it done is difficult. I mean, we could have -- we're assessing perhaps for a base model, and then we just need to have another model. The goals that the communities talk about for the Walani project are to reduce speed of transport transit, transmit, and other transportation, and to have all single occupancy vehicles. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Danton. Our next speaker.
Is Wendy Gray. Wendy Gray speaking on item 1202.
Ms. Gray, it's good to see you. Your name and address for the record, please. Thanks for joining us.
Wendy Gray, 1047 Myers Park Drive, and I'm here speaking on behalf of myself. And I want to address, in more general terms, a lot of the discussion that's already occurred regarding the Walani amendment. At the Walani workshop, Commissioner Richardson confirmed that there would be an opportunity for the public to give input before the commission adopted the amendment currently scheduled for November 10th. The following day, I requested via email clarification on how that follow-up was going to occur. On October 23rd, I received an email from the planning department that stated, and I quote, "While there was a discussion of a number of topics, as you can see in the records provided, the city and county motions that passed included only direction to implement County Commissioner Rick Minor's suggestion to include additional language to allow open space transfers," end quote. And again, you've heard here tonight that there are a number of issues that people thought were going to be continued to be under discussion, and we're now one week from the adoption hearing agenda item being released. I ask that the city commission reaffirm its intent for staff to follow up with community members and organizations that had questions or made recommendations at the workshop. I'd also just like to add, if I have a few seconds left, that Debbie Leidtzi did register for this meeting, there was a problem with her registration, and if it's at all possible, she would still like to make her comments this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Cook.
Next speaker is Max Hurley on item 1202.
Mr. Hurley, your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Hey, Max Hurley, 117 South Gadsden Street. I'm here tonight on behalf of Kalaran Homes Association. I know that we're not going to get to change anything tonight on these Walani items, but we want to use this as an opportunity to look forward to the November 10th meeting and update you on the work that Kalaran is putting into this. And I do mean work. I realize that this is what Debbie Danton and I do professionally, but our board is made up of passionate volunteers and leaders in their own community, and all they want to do is represent the interests of their neighbors, working together to make their community a better place than they found it. And I think that's why we're all here. So what is Kalaran's solution to this? Last night, we submitted a letter to commissioners for the November 10th meeting. The landowner's representative emailed us back, frankly extremely dismissive of our request, and told us, and I quote, "I'm done negotiating with you over this." Well, commissioners, frankly, Kalaran is not. It is not the landowner's determination to make for when this commission has completed public consideration of these issues. It was the explicit direction on the October 13th meeting to continue working with stakeholders on these issues, and I appreciate Commissioner Richardson particularly for making that clear. As you know, with the increased density of the comp plan amendment, Kalaran is looking for a stop clause language that would limit density to be consistent with the Northeast Gateway traffic model. At this point, we do not have the stop clause language in the final agenda items to even consider, and we are working towards getting to a place where we would have that. We do have meetings this week with planning to explore the stop clause language of the Southwood DRI and see if we could make similar language work within Walani. And I really want to emphasize that we just want to get this right. We want to work as a partner with the city and with the county on this. But we can't do that if we can't keep our word. And part of that word is to residents in honoring the commitments that the board has made to residents and making sure that our city and county partners honor their word. And that is to the Northeast Gateway traffic model, the densities that were done then, and the underlying assumptions built into that model. It is very important to Kalaran residents that we honor the model. Kalaran is looking for commissioners that are willing to lean into these challenges and have these conversations, and we want to find a path forward on this, but we don't think that we can find, due to the process that we have right now on the 10th, we don't think that we're going to be able to get there by November 10th, because the language has to be worked out through the landowner's representative, through the city and county, and through Kalaran and the other stakeholders. So we are asking that you all consider delaying the hearing if we are unable to get the Kalaran amendment in there by November 10th, and that we bring it back with that additional amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Clark.
Mayor, we only had one additional speaker registered for this portion of the meeting. We do have a couple of unagended speakers. Max Epstein had registered, but at the time we started the meeting, had not called in and connected.
Mr. Epstein, have you joined us? Mr. Epstein, are you with us?
Then we have no other speakers at this part of the meeting. We'll have unagended later.
Excellent. We will have the opportunity for unagended speakers later on in the meeting. Let's move forward. Do we have any appearances before this board? Mr. Manager.
No, sir, would you not?
Excellent. We are on the consent agenda.
Move acceptance.
It's been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 11.01. Mr. Clark, can we mute the microphone so that, or is that automatically when people hang up, it's going to?
That I'm not sure of. I think that is one of the things that we're learning with this first meeting.
No worries, no worries. We're on number 11.01, and that is, Mr. Clark.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor and commissioners, the city appoints three members to the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, the county does likewise. This item recommends Marilyn Larson to your third seat. She would fill a seat that had been vacated to the end of its term, and then she would be eligible for two full terms. The agenda item states that she would be available or eligible for one additional term, but she does get two full terms, so this partial term she's filling for someone else would not account against those two. Recommendation is to appoint Marilyn Larson.
Excellent. Properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seen no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Pass unanimously, 5-0, 11.02. Mr. Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and commissioners, you remember that in September, at the end of your meeting on the 23rd, there was some discussion of bylaws for the Tallahassee Human Relations Committee. In the follow-up and research following that meeting, we noted that there were some vacancies. Also, several terms were to expire on September the 30th. So this item would fill the vacant seats with a combination of reappointments for those who are eligible to serve an additional term, as well as some new appointments. This item does come from the office of the mayor to you. This is specified in the bylaws for that committee. I will point out that for many years now, it has, the practice has been that the mayor simply made appointments, and items did not come to the city commission on this particular committee, but the bylaws do say that they should, and so the mayor has brought these forward to you for consideration.
Mr. Mayor.
Madam Pro Tem.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Jim. Mr. Mayor, I'm going to ask that we table this item to December for the fact that this was just added to the agenda on yesterday, so the public may not have had, I know Mr. Sims was able to catch it, but the public has not had an opportunity to weigh in on this. And some of the organizations that their representatives are having elections, and they may desire with their new board to have someone else represent them. So I'm going to ask if we could table this until a December meeting to make these appointments.
We're going to postpone this action until December meeting. Motion made by the mayor pro tem, I'll second it. I was a little surprised it came at such a short time. And Mr. Clark, I think it's appropriate, let's work together and bring the complete package. Let's bring the proposed bylaws that have been recommended by the Human Relations Council that's also being worked through with your office and the attorney's office and the full slate after everyone's had the opportunity to look at it. Everybody comfortable with that?
Question, Mr. Mayor.
Sure. Commissioner Richardson.
So the amendments, the bylaw amendments that are being proposed and brought to us were those approved by a previous Human Relations Council? I mean, it was my understanding that those amendments had not been approved by a forum of the Human Relations Commission.
That's a good question. I'm not sure. At this point, they were recommended, and I'll ask the city attorney to weigh in as well. I know the city attorney's office is looking through them to make recommendations. I have not weighed in to bring anything to you yet. I'm letting the process work. I know Mr. Cook's office is as well. I mean, it's still a work in progress, but do you happen to know, Madam Attorney, if they were formal recommendations that came from the previous Human Relations Council?
I believe that they did come from the current Human Relations Committee, but it sounds like with the possible other persons in a full different Human Relations Committee, it might be appropriate to have those go back and be reviewed once the appointments are made.
Sounds great. I am even willing to take a step back as well and let a new council be formed after the appointments in December. Let them take another look at their proposed bylaws and send recommendations. In the meantime, I do want the city attorney and the treasurer clerk's office to continue working on this item. Yeah, I think that's great, knowing that proposed bylaws won't come until probably the beginning of the new year before this commission, and if we're all comfortable with that, I'm comfortable. Madam Mayor Pro Tem.
I also wanted to mention, Mr. Sims mentioned something about expanding their role and responsibility. We need to be clear that the Citizen Police Review Board purview will be different from this committee, so that would not be a role of this committee. It's a separate entity altogether.
Correct.
And Delacie Hollinger would have me remind us of history of where this committee, the Human Relations Committee, came from. It came from the fact that Robert Perkins and his wife Trudy Perkins had played a role in this, in that this was the result of a lawsuit that was, that made it necessary to have a committee like this to make sure that there was fair and equal pay for people working in the city and that they could have access to higher positions. So I wanted to just put that in the record because we've had some communications about how this came about. So the history of this commission, it might be good to include that and incorporate that somewhere in the documentation regarding this particular committee.
Excellent. Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I agree with the mayor pro tem on that, because I tell you what, I'm about to get confused with all these review boards and commissions and committees, and if I'm confused, the public, I'm sure is confused. So it might even be helpful if we, I don't know if a workshop or just a summary of each of these, because I don't know if there's going to be overlap, duplication, will they address some of the same issues, none of the same issues? And so if we could have some kind of summary of each of the citizen review boards and the citizen oversight committees that the chief has formed, the Human Relations Council, and if there are others, so that we can get an understanding of the role and function of each of these and what they will be presenting to us as a commission and to staff.
That's a great idea. I'm right there with you. I've already asked the city attorney's office to provide that clarification, but I agree, I agree. Mayor Pro Tem.
To that point, I thought -- To that point, I thought that we had that somewhere on our website, or, because when you, when citizens go to apply for these different committees, there should be some description of the roles and responsibilities already there, so that folks will know whether they want to apply for it or not. The only thing that's missing is the new one that we are now taking applications for, and it's been very public what that role, I believe is missing, I haven't checked. But we're very clear on what that role is, and it's something that has been asked for by the citizens for many, many years. So I think that we have that there, maybe it needs brushing up, sprucing up, attention paid to it or what have you, so that citizens will know, but I think we have that.
That's correct. There is a description for each item. We'll make sure, particularly these that you're discussing tonight, make sure that those are current and accurate.
I think what Commissioner Richardson was speaking to, and I'm going to recognize you in a second, there was more of the specific legal aspects of, are there overlap with roles and responsibilities? Commissioner Richardson.
And it may be that this could be in one section where people wouldn't have to go from, because they may not know what all the review boards and citizen commissions are, if there was one place that they could go to so that they could get those descriptions and understand what the role and function of each of those are. Because a lot of people just can't navigate, you know, our website, and if they could go to one place and get all of that information.
Gotcha.
Excellent. Any further comment? Motion on the table by the Mayor Pro Tem is to table action on 11.02 until the December 10th meeting, seconded by myself. Seen no further comment. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
A point of clarification, I think when we were, you were speaking, you indicated that because it may need to go to the formally, the form you thought it might come back in January.
No, let me clarify. I had made that suggestion, but I think my good colleagues, and I can't remember who it was, actually suggested, no, let's appoint the board, so that a new board has the opportunity to then review any recommendations that were previously made, and what your two offices will work together. And I'm looking to the Mayor Pro Tem specifically, that the motion on the table is to bring back 11.02, which is the appointment of the council.
Correct.
That will then move forward with the business. Okay. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. We are on the introduction of ordinance, Madam Attorney, 12.01.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 12.01 is introduction of ordinance number 20-0-44, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Section 6 of the Charter of the City of Tallahassee to annex within the corporate area of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, upon adoption of said ordinance, property being situated in Leon County, Florida, in accordance with the voluntary annexation provisions of Section 171.044 Florida statute, providing for severability, conflicts, and an effective date. The recommended action is Option 1, introduce ordinance number 20-0-44, and set the first and only public hearing for December 9, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Madam Attorney, you're looking for a motion for Option Number 1?
That is correct.
Move Option Number 1, Mr. Mayor.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Seen no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously four zero with Commissioner Matlow out of chambers, 12.02, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 12.02, introduction of ordinance number 20-0-35, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee adopting a text amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leon County Conferences Plan, providing for severability and conflicts, and provided an effective date. This is the text amendment will update the Walani Critical Action Plan to include the development plan for the Walani Arch, and will extend the urban services area in the location of the Walani Arch. The recommended action is Option 1, introduce ordinance number 20-0-35, and set the first and only public hearing for the joint meeting of the City Commission and the Leon County Board of County Commissioners on November 10, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Excellent. Is there a motion for 12.02? I'm assuming that you are looking for Option Number 1?
That is correct.
Excellent.
I'd move Option Number 1.
Probably moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Seen no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye. I am so sorry, Commissioner Richardson for the comment.
I know that there were some questions concerning the commission's intent from the last meeting in terms of continuing to work with stakeholders, take public comment, and incorporate those into the amendment if possible. That was certainly my intention when I asked for that, and so I hope that staff continues to work with interested parties to take their input, either, I guess, virtually still, since we're not at the point where we can take in-person testimony, and see if those items can be incorporated into the amendment that comes back to us on November 10th.
Thank you. Free comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any further comment? Commissioner Matlow, there is a motion on the table. We're on item 12.02, which is just Option Number 1, which is the introduction of the ordinance into the record. Made by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Seen no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. We are now on 12.03. Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 12.03 is introduction of ordinance number 20-0-37, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee adopting a large-scale map amendment to the 2030 Tallahassee-Leon County Conferences Plan, providing for severability and conflicts and an effective date. Recommended action is Option 1, introduce ordinance number 20-0-37, and set the first and only public hearing for the joint meeting of the City Commission and the Leon County Board of County Commissioners on November 10, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Recommended option is Option Number 1. Commissioner Richardson moves staff recommendation, seconded by Dr. Bryant. Seen no further comment.
And Mr. Mayor, same comment on this item.
Yes, sir. Duly noted for the record.
Thank you.
Seen no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero, 12.04, Madam Attorney.
Thank you. Item number 12.04, introduction of ordinance number 20-Z-38, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating land as planned development on the official zoning map from rural, critical planning area and single-family detached residential R-1, providing for conflict and severability and provided an effective date. The recommended action is Option 1, introduce ordinance number 20-Z-38, and set the first of two public hearings for the joint meeting of the City Commission and the Leon County Board of County Commissioners on November 10, 2020, at 6:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall. Set the second public hearing on December 9, 2020, at 5:00 p.m. in the City of Tallahassee City Commission Chambers at City Hall.
Thank you, Madam Attorney. The recommended option is for Option Number 1. Properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Seen any further comment? Seen none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously five zero. Do we have any other ordinances to be read into the record?
No. You do not. Thank you. Sorry.
Excellent. We're on policy formation and direction, 13.01, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioners, before I begin with the introduction, it's good to be back.
It is.
Good to be back and to see everybody. It's a little different, but it's good. Item 13.01 is a recommendation by staff to implement an amnesty program for our code enforcement fines and liens. This is consistent with the direction that is included in your strategic plan, specifically Objective 7B, Item 3, which is designed to reach a target of 90% compliance. That's the ultimate objective of these programs, is that properties are brought up to code and there's compliance. The proposed amnesty program is designed to provide financial relief during this unprecedented economic environment, and a potential economic stimulus to encourage property owners to address lingering code violations and join their neighbors in revitalization efforts. It will build upon several recent enhancements to the Code Enforcement Division to better serve the community. With your direction, we hope to further streamline the current process, which is working and has shown great promise in terms of code compliance, to create a clean slate that bridges the gap to ultimate compliance. Staff recommends Option 1, which is to approve the implementation of a code enforcement fine and lien amnesty program with an expected implementation of early 2021. Mayor, Commissioners, with your indulgence, I'd like our Director, Ben Ojatayo, Director of Housing and Community Resilience, to give a little more overview and depth of this. This is something that she and her staff have worked on. I think it is very consistent with what we're seeing from her department, and I'd love for you to hear it and share it with the public as well.
Thank you so much, City Manager, and thank you, Commissioners, for the opportunity to talk with you about this program. I will just give a brief overview, but a lot of the information is in your agenda packet. And so for the good of those that are listening and may not have had a chance to read it, we're really excited to present this amnesty program. As the City Manager has mentioned, there's been a series of programs and enhancements that have been going on, and I think this is just one more tool that we have in our toolkit to address an issue that you're very familiar with. In fact, everybody that lives in community is aware of some of the issues that come up that often lead to, or come to, our Code Enforcement Division. Oftentimes, we're dealing with violations that range from something petty as, you know, overgrown grass, to something as serious as an abandoned property that is really unsafe for anybody that might come close to that property. There are many reasons that these issues come up, whether it is the capacity of the property owner at that time. Sometimes there are familial issues, there are probate issues that get in the way. We also unfortunately have some property owners that are absentee, or they don't live in our community, and all of these things can kind of compound into what we see every day in some areas. I will highlight, though, that Tallahassee does have a relatively small number of code violations. I know it doesn't seem that way, but it's less than 0.1% of the properties that are in our community that end up getting issues that escalate to our code enforcement process. Nevertheless, when they're there, and when you live next to one, you feel it, you know the impact. It can be economic, it can have a financial impact on your own property values, it has a negative quality of life impact as well for neighbors, and of course, there are serious health and safety issues that could come about as well. What we found over the decades of doing code enforcement is that issues can, in fact, linger for a long time. While at this stage, we have about 60% of our violations get addressed eventually, and a majority of those are addressed through voluntary compliance, we do have a few cases that linger for a long time, for some of the reasons that I've mentioned before, and those lead to fines and liens. When a case has been brought to our attention, we directly engage with the property owners. We work with them to try to resolve it voluntarily, but if it doesn't happen that way, our city has established a municipal code enforcement board, as well as code magistrates, that hear these cases, provide an objective view, and provide an opportunity for property owners to correct them. When that doesn't happen, it evolves into fines, and when it lingers more, we have the opportunity to apply a lien on the property. And so that's the normal process. But this burden is not just individual, it can be generational, in fact, when properties are passed down. The burden is significant, and it does stifle economic vitality in any area. And so with that in mind, we've been working over the last two years to really enhance the overall code enforcement process. One of the things that we're so excited about is the proactive nature that our officers have taken. We've reclassified them as resilience officers, and what that does is it changes our perspective to focus on public safety, public health issues primarily, but it also empowers our officers to go forth and educate and to engage our residents to take proactive actions themselves. We've been doing a lot more of that, and I'm really proud of the team, because they go out on a limb for their neighbors. They see themselves as fellow neighbors in our community, and they're so passionate about this, and we start to see that show forth in their efforts. Last June, which seemed like a year ago, but it was really just a couple months ago, Commissioners, you approved a change in ordinance in our code that allows us to have a much more streamlined process that catches up, up to date with some of the state laws and precedents that have been established, and with the help of the City Attorney's Office, I think we have a really up-to-date, more modern process. And so in line with that as well, we want to try to catch up the other cases that have been adjudicated prior to that, but still linger on as part of our case file. Lastly, I want to highlight that the neighborhood revitalization efforts that you've invested so much into has consistently yielded these same issues to staff, that neighborhoods want the revitalization, beginning with addressing lots that have lingering code enforcement violations. And so what we're hoping is that this amnesty program can be yet another incentive, another way that we can join hands with the grassroots efforts that are already going on, and encourage neighbors that may have been looking for that extra push to participate in the revitalization of their neighborhoods. We're hoping that this amnesty program can do that. Again, with the engagement, our team has been actively involved with the conversations. We're showing up at their neighborhood meetings, and we're helping them think through the process and what it means, and what kind of tools that neighborhood leaders can utilize for their revitalization. This amnesty program will be right in line with that. So what we are proposing is, roughly speaking, a program that will launch in a limited period of time in early January. Just give us a little bit of time to get everything set up with your permission, but we will be ready to roll in January. We're asking that property owners take some initiative by making a small application, nothing complicated, but simply to say, yes, we want to participate in this. And once they join the program, they will have the opportunity to have their fines and their liens removed. We propose that the lien amnesty require just the administrative fees, and this is consistent, by the way, I should mention, we've had many conversations internally with staff and other stakeholders, but we also sought the input from our members of the municipal code enforcement board, as well as our magistrate, and so some of the feedback is reflected here. Often, when a property owner goes to the board and asks for a reconsideration, it usually is significantly reduced, with the exception of administrative costs. And so this will be an opportunity where we would think with that tradition as well, where they would pay anything from $50 to $350, depending on the case, in order to receive the rest of the forgiveness of their fines. And then we will want to reserve the rights to limit this to non-urgent public safety issues, and cases where we, the city, has some significant liability. And so I think it would be prudent for us to have some flexibility to say, if this case is too urgent, it's too dire, we don't want to encourage it taking any longer than it needs to. Those cases will be excluded. In addition, those cases where the city issues permits, particularly in coordination with our growth management department, we would want to make sure that the city does not put ourselves in any liability for allowing a case like that to linger. But with the exception of that, we'll be ready to roll with your support. As the City Manager has mentioned, this is right in line with your strategic plan. It is very much focused on creating places that feel safe, that are in fact safe. It will be addressing the impact on poverty, injecting an economic stimulus during these times, and also alleviating financial burdens. We are excited to just join with our neighbors, and I think this is an opportunity to support them and to show that we are all in, if we can have property owners that can also step up and partner with us. And with that, I'll just end with the slide which you have in your packet. Our staff's recommendation to you is to approve the implementation of the program. Thank you.
Director Ojatayo, excellent job. Nice presentation as well. Certainly do appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I would move Option 1.
Been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Coming back for comment, Commissioner Richardson?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I can't tell you how excited I am about this. I had the opportunity, Ms. Ojatayo, before you came on board, and before I was elected to the commission to serve as a code magistrate, and these were just the kinds of issues that we dealt with when people came before us. And what I always tried to do was to have staff work with the property owners, to try to come into compliance without assessing fines and liens. Now, as you mentioned, there were instances where we might have an absentee property owner, and they weren't interested in doing anything. And so the fines and fees would accumulate, and we'd have to eventually put a lien on the property. But I think this is an excellent opportunity for us to work with those property owners But I think this is an excellent opportunity for us to work with those property owners because what's important is that these properties are brought into compliance. That's the ultimate of what we want to achieve. I've had, I know you've worked with me on a couple of properties that I have called you about or called your staff about. One was in the Sable Palm neighborhood. I couldn't believe that, you know, whoever owned that property let it get in the condition that it was. It was an abandoned home, and it was weeds, and I know there had to have been rodents and snakes and everything else in that property. And it was there for weeks, months, maybe years. And we want people to come into compliance because it does have an impact on the neighborhood and the quality of life that people enjoy in their neighborhoods. If your property abuts, you know, something that looks like that. So this is an excellent program. I certainly support it, like I said, because of my history as a code magistrate and understanding that this is something that we really need to explore. So thank you for the leadership that you have provided, not only in this area, but in all of the other departments over which you have been charged. We thank you for your insight, your vision, and the leadership that you've provided in that respect.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Madam Mayor Pro Tem and then Commissioner Matlow.
I too want to say thank you, Abena. This is awesome. I've heard people talk about, they don't see things happening because when they ride around, and I say, you can't just ride around, you got to get out and look. So here's an opportunity where folks will be able to ride around and see that we're making improvements, we're working with our community partners to make these improvements in our community. We're neighborhood-friendly, and this is, to me, is an opportunity to create legacies to be passed on to our next generation. So thank you for you and your staff, your team's vision, and thank you for being creative and thinking out of the box. I heard somebody say that tonight, that you're thinking out of the box. I think Mr. Sims said that. He's on it today. He's resting pink and green for me, and he's making great comments, and so I'm going to agree with Mr. Sims. I'm agreeing with Mr. Sims that you are thinking out of the box, and thank you for your due diligence, you and your team, for trying to make our community be all that it can be. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Commissioner Matlow. And Commissioner Bryant.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll echo a lot of what Commissioner Richardson said, because that's exactly what I was going to say. And also, just thank you for your work on this. One of the things that stuck out to me was the public safety component, and we've kind of addressed that head on. If it's really a public safety concern, we need to get it addressed right away, but there are so many, I do think people in the community that are just afraid of those fines are afraid to come forward once they see them stack up because they can get to thousands of dollars very quickly. So I think this is a win-win for people who have maybe been worried about getting into compliance or just have that stress on their lives to go ahead and come into compliance, get the amnesty, and it helps the neighborhood at the same time. So great idea, and thank you for your work.
Thank you, sir.
Excellent. Commissioner?
All right.
Dr. Bryant?
Thank you. Ditto, ditto, ditto. And I would like to move option one.
Option one's already been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by Mayor Pro Tem. I won't put you down as a strong supporter. How about that? All right. Any further comment? Seeing none. Staff recommendation's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five-zero. Mr. City Manager, item 13.02.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This next item, item 1302, involves funding for the Orange Avenue Public Housing Redevelopment Project. And as you know, the city's been actively engaged in encouraging that project. It involves, a major component of it is the Purpose Built Communities portion, which was launched last year, was with good news that we received that good news last year. It will be one of the most significant affordable housing development projects for our community in a long time, and that it's been a priority of this commission. This item tonight is administrative in nature. It closes out a series of actions that you've been engaged with primarily through the CRA, you as the CRA board, to support the project's Phase II application to the Florida Housing Finance Corporation. As I mentioned, you as the CRA board recently approved $1.5 million toward this project as part of the fiscal year 21 budget. The Florida Housing Finance Corporation requires that a local government, that would be the City of Tallahassee, formally endorse and certify their preference project for each round of applications. To that end, staff recommends option one that's in your agenda material. Director Ojatayo is here to answer questions, as well as our interim CRA Director Wayne Tetter.
Excellent. So open it up for discussion.
Move option one.
Properly moved by Commissioner Richardson, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five-zero. One, item number 13.03. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, sir. This item stands out a little bit. It's special to us. I think we all know, a few years ago, when we started down the path of tempo, that we weren't sure what we could achieve, but we knew we had an issue. We knew we had approximately 7,000 disconnected youth in our community, and a disconnected youth for everyone's benefit is defined generally as late teen, early twenties, 16- to 24-year-old members of our community that are either not in school or employed. Many have dropped out of school, they lack the high school diploma or other training to be gainfully employed, and generally don't have a good path forward. That leads to all kinds of issues, as we know, and we want these young adults to be successful, and the city embarked upon this journey of a tempo program to engage as many disconnected youth as possible. Now, as we sit here today, more than 1,100, 1,100, an amazing number of disconnected youth have been engaged by our team led by Dr. Campbell Thomas. And I'm going to pass the baton to him for a minute, and I'm certain I'm sharing part of his presentation at this moment, but I want to underscore it, and I want him to repeat it because we found a lot of success. However, what we have found is there are additional resources that are needed by the participants in the program. It could be as simple as a computer for a job. It could be tuition. It could be services related to job skills. And we think, and we're recommending to you tonight, that a foundation, a fundraising arm of tempo, no paid positions, no overhead as it relates to it, but the ability to raise money from members of our community, businesses, and individuals toward this program can really take it to the next level. And so we're presenting to you tonight a recommendation to create a foundation similar to what we would have for our senior centers and others, very specifically for this program. Mr. Mayor Commissioners, if I can have Dr. Thomas, who you know is the spirit behind this, add a little bit more to what I said, and at the conclusion, we're seeking your approval and support to move forward with a tempo foundation, which would be a 501(c)(3) organization.
Dr. Thomas, good to see you, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening. Mayor Daley, Mayor Pro Tem Williams Cox, respective Commissioners, City Manager Goad, and all the other appointed officials, and those who are in the chamber this evening, with great deal of pride and a sense of humility. This item comes to you because of the fact of the support that it's gotten from this commission, from the executive team, from departments all over Tallahassee and this city, but also from the public interest that we're getting. That tells me about this program because of great public interest and commitment for these participants. They realize that this program is not a handout, but a hand up. They understand that young people are some of the best human capital invested in our community. They understand the impact department in public safety that it plays in making that investment. When I look at the arc of this program, from the throes of 2525 Texas Street three years ago to this item tonight in the chamber, I stand with you with a great deal of pride. The public interest has driven us to this, and we're very happy tonight to say that many people will ask, how can we help? How can we support? What do they need? And we have items for additional support. It's already in your packet with respect to workforce scholarship for those who have drug offenses and cannot get Pell Grants to go to school. Our young girls who have childcare needs and could get vouchers with this support are just simple attire for work and clothing and work boots and those things. So we're very happy about that public interest and public support that has driven this. We would do those wraparound services as much as we can with this support. We would be very intentional in our setup. I have a great mentor and Director Edwards of Parks and Rec, who's got foundations already that are proven, and we'll leverage that experience also with the City Attorney's Office. So I would tell you this evening, with a great deal of pride for the 1,200 disconnected youth in our community who are actively engaged in this program, they're keeping their commitment. They're looking for jobs, they're going to school, they're bettering their education, they're investing in the civics of this community. And that public safety piece, not one, not one in this program have re-offended, offended, or violated their probation since they started this program. They're keeping their commitment, and we thank you for your committed support. I'm here to answer any questions you may have.
Well, I think you're rocking and rolling. Let's move on here. Is there a motion for staff recommendation? Properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor, the motion on the table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five-zero. Thank you very much. Do we have anything else?
Thank you.
Before this body during policy formation and direction?
No, Mr. Mayor. That concludes the business portion of the City Commission meeting.
All right, colleagues, I am going to adjourn us out of the City Commission meeting. I am now calling to order the CRA meeting. We are on item number 15.01. Mr. City Manager?
Mr. Mayor, I'm going to acknowledge our interim CRA Director Wayne Tetter, who will also recognize Lou Norvell from our City Attorney's Office.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. We have two items for discussion for today's special CRA meeting. The first one is item 15.01. This is a request to provide additional extension of the agreement that we have for 440 North Project Development that you have had some comments on tonight. With that, I'm just going to turn it over to Lou. Both of these items will be introduced by Lou Norvell, and we'll go from there. So with that, Lou?
Mr. Norvell, good to see you, sir.
Good to see you, Mr. Mayor. Good afternoon. This item concerns a proposed extension of time for the CRA Development Agreement for the 440 project. The developer has requested a six-month extension on the permitting and commencement date and an 18-month extension for the completion date. The board approved the development agreement as revised back in May of 2018, and earlier this year, the board extended the permitting and commencement date to December 31. I will note that the final site plan was issued earlier this month, and the site plan includes a number of protections for the trees on site and particularly the large oak adjacent to Virginia Street. Conditions for the site plan include review by the city arborist to ensure that the trees are protected. And I did speak with the arborist today, and she has reviewed this, and she assures me that the trees, and particularly the large oak, will be protected. There are applications pending with the Growth Management Department for issuance of the environmental management permit and the building permits, and the developer has requested the extension due to COVID and other issues. The staff recommendation is to grant the extension. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Norvell. All right, let's go ahead and open it up for discussion. Mayor Pro Tem?
I want to be clear, loud and clear and sure, that that oak tree will be protected. I understand that there will be some light altercations to make it community-friendly on that site, but it will be protected. That oak will remain there, unharmed. Can you speak? I want to hear you say something.
So yes, Commissioner, I've spoken to the arborist, she's reviewed it, she's done a report on this. She assures me that the oak will be protected. I understand there will be some pruning of the tree, but she assures me that the tree will continue and be healthy.
Tell Mindy we're counting on her. We're counting on her. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure, Mr. Mayor.
May I expound upon that in just a moment? I just want to make sure we're clear. We've mentioned Mindy. Mindy Mormon is the person we're referring to, and a few years back, the City Commission found it appropriate to hire an urban forester. She is a professional certified arborist and forester, and she's the person we're referring to as the one that has reviewed the plan. The plans were submitted by the developer that would entail some pruning of the tree and the location of the buildings. She, and she alone, is the expert for staff, and because we certainly wouldn't want to attempt to do her job, she has much more expertise than us layfolks. She is the one who has reviewed it, she has approved it, not on first blush, it was modified based on her direction, and has also indicated that she and others will be directly involved in any work that's done on the tree. So I just wanted to share that because we've discussed Mindy and who is doing that. That is the urban forester that works in our planning department and serves both the city and the county.
And one other question. I understand that Mindy has required an arborist to be there, right? So we have an urban forester and an arborist. These folks are college-educated, certified, and they've given us a report saying that that tree will be protected?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like to make a motion for staff recommendation?
I sure would.
Second.
Properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Chairman. I just had a question for Mr. Tetter on the impact of the tree. This project has changed so many times, so the current development, we talked about the retaining wall, so is the actual physical structure in the root zone at all? The root protection zone?
So we have the urban forester on line. Let me let her explain the conditions. She is the one that has reviewed all the conditions and can identify exactly where there is area for the roots to grow. And I think that's the bottom line is what you're looking for, is where do the roots grow for the site. So with that, I think Harold, if you can pull Mindy on line, and she can address those questions.
We have, while they're pulling it up. So we have taken advantage of the WebEx connection, and we have staff available. I think this will be really well done here.
Excellent.
You're muted, Mindy.
How's that?
Perfect.
Okay. Okay. Hi, everyone, thank you. Yes, there will be some impact to the tree, but the applicant has provided a tree protection and mitigation plan from a qualified arborist that minimizes the impact and suggests some treatment to the tree that improves the health of the tree over time. So at this point, I believe that the impact to the tree is at a level that the tree can tolerate and recover from. There is construction activity and actual structure that will be placed inside the protection zone of the tree, but the tree protection plan that was provided includes treatment to minimize those impacts.
Excellent. Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Matlow?
While you're there, can you speak to the canopy of the tree and what portions will be removed or the impact on the visual aspects of the tree?
The protection plan and mitigation plan includes pruning of one of the large major structural branches about 22 inches in size. So they're pretty large, but it's a level within what's commonly considered a tolerable and healthy level of pruning. So you will see the loss of one major structural branch and some pruning of a couple smaller lower limbs that would be at grade once the proposed building was built.
Okay, thank you.
Excellent. Seeing no further comment. Motion on tables from the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson for staff recommendation. Option number one. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five-zero. We're on item number 15.02. Madam Attorney, or Mr. Norvell, or Mr. Tetter?
One of you. Who's on first? This one, and if we do have questions, Mr. Norvell can follow up on those.
Excellent.
So item number 15.02 presents a proposed purchase and sell agreement between T. Brown Consulting Group and the CRA for the sale of property located at 431 West Virginia Street. On May 28, 2020, the CRA board approved the sale of 431 West Virginia Street and directed staff to work with TBCG on the terms of the proposed sale. The property is proposed to be incorporated into a mixed-use housing development. TBCG... TBCG has requested the purchase and sale agreement in order to pursue tax credits and financing for the project. Under the proposed agreement, the sale of the property may be scheduled within one year, and there is a 280-day period for the buyer to evaluate the property and assess feasibility. Assurances incorporated in the agreement for the CRA include the following. The sale is contingent on CRA Board approval of the development concept plan, the demonstration of adequate capital and financing for construction, approval of the project as an urban planned unit development, and construction of adjacent TMH clinic. The CRA would have the ability to repurchase the property if offered for resale. The property would be restricted and used limited, limited to mixed-use housing development, and use is not inconsistent with the CRA Greater Frenchtown South Side redevelopment plan. The obligations of the CRA will be, will recommend it to be secured by a mortgage. We have had a request for modifications to which CRA staff does not object, and that is the extension for up to an additional 360 days of the purchase and sale agreement, automatic expiration of the reverter and right to CRA repurchase upon completion of mixed-use housing development, and an option of a mortgage or written declaration of covenants as security. CRA staff has no objection to these modifications. Therefore, the recommended action is approval of the purchase and sale agreement for 431 West Virginia Street with the modifications.
Excellent. It's been properly moved, staff recommendation for the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Dr. Bryant, Commissioner Bryant. Any further comment? Yes, sir, Commissioner Richardson.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Attorney, and, and Tony is here. He may want to address this, and we've talked about it before, but we've had lots of conversation about low-income, affordable, mixed-use housing, and I just want us the opportunity to again address the, the, the mix of housing that will be available in this development.
Thank you so much for joining us.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I'm Tony Brown, 1028 Eastern Park Avenue. Commissioner Richardson, thank you for the question. We understand that this commission has a goal of affordable workforce housing, and what we have actually designed for the site is a mix of workforce housing. If we do pursue tax credits, they do require an element or a percentage of, of units to be affordable to families whose income is below 60%. And because of that mix is what's creating the financing gap and having us to look more closely at our site cost. But we are committed, as is your staff, given the direction and the feedback we've gotten from the community, of having a project that is beneficial to the current residents of Frenchtown.
Great, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Brown, thank you so much.
Just wanted us to go on record as supporting what our initiatives have been in this regard. We had a lot of conversation about the same issue with respect to, and it's ongoing, Walani and Canopy and some of the other major developments. I just wanted to be on record as saying that we're in line with those initiatives, with your project as well.
I should add, I didn't talk about the commercial element on the ground floor, as we shared before. It was our vision before the pandemic to create an environment of a food court that will allow for small restaurants in a very festive atmosphere to be located. Our architect is here, and so we're looking at other concepts to make sure that post-pandemic, that we create an environment that patrons feel safe. We also recognize that we probably have to create an element that would allow for takeout and delivery as opposed to just sit-in dining. So we are looking at the commercial space to determine that post-pandemic, that it will be a sustainable and vibrant project.
Excellent.
Mr. Mayor, one other, one other question?
Sure, yes, sir.
This isn't related to the item, but it's tangentially related, related rather. Are you all still in, in conversation with the Roberts family on their property?
As you know, this process started at my invitation. Everybody's keeping their mask on, so I'll keep mine on. This project started with us working with the property owners to try to do a coalesced project, and the Roberts family was very much part of that process. In the end, they decided that because they currently have income-producing property, that it was important to maintain it, and they have opted out.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Motion on tables for staff recommendation. Oh, Commissioner Matlow.
Yeah, just a, just a few quick comments. Somebody had reached out to me and asked me if we were, you know, selling a valuable piece of land for $10, and I just wanted to reiterate that this is tied to the development agreement and things that are forthcoming, so this is just an outright sale for $10. And likewise, as we, we invest in other development projects across the board, it's not unusual for, for this board to do that. It's just land instead of actual money, but it is contingent on all those things that the city attorney listed earlier.
Point well taken. Seeing no further comment. Staff recommendation for option number one has been properly made by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero. Mr. Tetter, is there anything else to come before the CRA Board today?
We have no further business.
Excellent. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to adjourn the CRA. I'm going to call back into the City Commission meeting. We are scheduled for a public hearing at 6:00, but Madam Attorney, can we move forward and do we have members that would like, members of the public that would like to speak on unengaged items with us right now that you're familiar with? And legally, can we go ahead and take them now, or do we have to wait till after the public hearing?
No, the unengaged speaker items can proceed.
Excellent. Mr. Clark, do we have our agenda, unengaged item speakers with us?
Sorry, Mayor, we do not have any in-person unengaged speakers, but we do have unengaged speakers on our virtual connection, and we can move forward with those.
How many speakers do we have, Mr. Clark?
We have three and a fourth who had registered, but I'll have, had not, again, connected at the beginning of the meeting, so we'll check there. So either three or four.
Okay.
Right? The first is Whitfield Leland.
Mr. Leland, your name and address for the record, please? And you have three minutes. The clerk will keep track of your time. Mr. Leland, are you with us?
Mr. Mayor, it may take just a moment. Harold Lane from our TNI group is bringing people in from a waiting room, so it may take just a moment to bring those individuals into the WebEx.
No worries. Mr. Clerk, did you just get an in-person speaker?
I did.
Okay. While we have Mr. Lane bringing everyone in from the, from the virtual waiting room, why don't we go ahead and take the in-person speaker now?
That speaker is Stanley Sims.
Give us an opportunity.
Who I assume is in the mezzanine, so Stanley Sims, we will take as soon as he comes He may well have been on the first floor. That's where we were signing up speakers, and he may have realized we were going to have this opportunity.
Sure.
Earlier than expected.
Well, I'll tell you what. Whoever comes first, Mr. Sims or our virtual speaker is not, okay. Do we have our virtual speakers?
Mr. Mayor, we have no virtual speakers at this time.
We have no virtual speakers on at this time. Okay, look, because this is the first.
Mayor, I believe that was Debbie Danton, who was one of the three that I had identified. I had Whitfield Leland, who we did not hear, Jeff Blair, and Debbie Danton. If that was Debbie Danton, she would be able to proceed.
All right, Debbie, are you with us?
Can you hear me?
Excellent. Yes, ma'am. Name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Well, thank you so much. Second time around, you couldn't hear me very well the first time, I understand. I'm Debbie Danton, 506 Frank Shaw Road, and I'm representing Calhoun Homeowners Association on the Walani Arch Compliment Amendment and Master Plan regarding transportation issues. So I'm going to try and make it simple. This is a massive project. We don't know the traffic impacts. This project seems to be treated a little differently than most, and the current policies do not adequately address future transportation needs if you could refer to my letter I sent you last night. Not trying to cause problems. I use the stop clause language. It's not necessarily to stop the, but it's to set a threshold with, a transportation up to how you get the impact. We know what a future transportation is going to see. There's potential mobility, automated connected vehicles, vision zero, more work from home, population growth assumptions that will change, and a new I-10 interchange at Walani Boulevard, which totally changes the way our transportation patterns in this region. So what we'd like to request is a baseline model to evaluate all the development in the master plan. This is not unlike what you've done for Stormwater. When you involved your experts for Stormwater, they basically wrote a policy that says, hold on. They basically, we identified a policy that says you must proceed with all analysis for Stormwater in the entire arch before any PUD is approved. Also, likewise, the roadway project, Walani Boulevard Extension and Shamrock South Extension, you ran a model for that, which only contained approximately one-third of the development that's identified in the master plan for the arch. So that's very minimal data that we know of the impact to our roads. We have a question about the process. It's interesting with the city being the applicant. The landowners have dictated pretty much what the city's policies will be or have had influence into that process on how the local government will review their development. I've never seen that before in all my years, and maybe one of the reasons for this.
You have 30 seconds remaining.
Maybe because the city is setting standards for the review of their 30, their 430-acre PUD that's located between the Canopy and the Walani Arch. Their recent policy on transportation, 13.2.3, is totally vague and inadequate and not good enough. So it sounds to me, instead of creating a transportation model for the PUDs to adhere to, we are approving PUDs to create a transportation model. So in closing, we'd like to ask for your assistance to help and work with you to develop language so that a model can be analyzed. Concurrent is not a fix.
You have three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Danton. Certainly do.
Thank you so much. Appreciate the opportunity.
Sure, absolutely. Do you want to take one second to wrap up your thought?
Well, concurrent not address the problem. We need to identify something that does. It's not equitable, and it typically ends up the last guy in the most.
Yes, ma'am.
So we'd like to, and get this right on the transportation policies for the next 70 years.
Thank you, Ms. Danton. Certainly do appreciate it. Do we have any of our other speakers have joined us? Mr. Clerk?
Jeff Blair.
Mr. Blair, are you with us? Is not with us. Our next speaker?
Whitfield Leland.
Mr. Leland, are you with us?
And the last I had, Chelsea Reymert had registered to speak. I don't believe she connected earlier, and just wanted to make sure before we close this part of the meeting.
Okay, going once. Going twice. Colleagues, just because this is one of the first times that we have done this, and we have a very short public hearing, I do say that we double-check after our item at the public hearing to see if anybody had joined us at 6:00, just to be fair, and I hope you'll, you'll be with me on that one. Let's go into the sharing of ideas, and we'll go ahead and wrap that up so that at 6:00 we just come back specifically for the public hearing. Mayor Pro Tem, we'll start with you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to, I want to ask that City Manager would have staff come back to us with some information regarding Emancipation Day celebration as a, as a city holiday. As we know, some of you, some of us may know, the county took this up, and they have agreed that they would have a county-paid holiday for Emancipation Day. Now, Emancipation Day is May 20. On May 20, 1865, General Cook came to Tallahassee and read the Emancipation Proclamation, which freed all slaves in Florida. Not to be confused with what's, what happened in Texas almost a month later. May 20 is the day that slaves in Florida were freed. Juneteenth, as it is referred to, is what happened in Texas on June 19, 1865. So I believe that it is fitting for the city of Tallahassee, the capital city of the state of Florida, to celebrate and hope that other cities in the state of Florida will follow suit to celebrate, continue to celebrate Emancipation Day on May 20. So I'm asking that an agenda item comes back to us on what that looks like for having city employees enjoy that day of celebration and in history. Now, I know that we have been celebrating that date here in, in the city of Tallahassee almost since the reading of the Emancipation 1865, but apparently, we still have some more education to do for the entire state of Florida because they're, in our, in the Florida Legislature, they're recognizing Juneteenth and statute and has not recognized Emancipation Day, and we're working to try to get that corrected. It's important that we know our history and that we document our history, so May 20, 1865 is when all slaves of Florida were freed, and so we want, want to look at having that date as our Emancipation Day as a, as a holiday.
Motion's on the table, and I will second that motion. Is there any discussion on the motion on the table to bring an agenda item out?
Just a question.
Yes, sir.
Paid holiday.
Paid, yes, yes, sir. Paid holiday, absolutely, absolutely. Paid holiday.
Excellent. Any other questions? Comments? All those in favor of the motion on the table, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously, five zero.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, you have four.
Tomorrow, tomorrow, we will be embarking upon our Race Relations Summit, and I just want to publicly thank our City Manager, our Deputy City Manager, Angela Hendrick, as Director of Diversity and Inclusion, and all of their staff for what they've done to bring this virtual free Race Relations Summit here to us, and we have a good mix, I believe it's a great mix, and I've been proud to work with them on this, of people who are premier in this field from across this country as well as locally, and there's something there for everyone, including our, our children. This summit begins tomorrow at 8:00 a.m., and it goes to 8:00 p.m. There are a series of workshops. We have a keynote speaker in Tim Wise. We have nationally-known June Elliott, I mean Jane Elliott, as well as many others that will be talking to us and helping us to look at what we can do, what our part is in fixing some of our race relations. So I encourage everyone to register for. You don't have to just live in the city of Tallahassee. You can live anywhere. I've sent invitations to people all over the country in hopes that folks will tune in and see what we're doing here in Tallahassee, because I'm very proud of what we're doing here. We're not perfect, but we are perfecting. We are working on becoming better, and this is one of the tools in our toolkit to make that happen. I also want to recognize breast cancer awareness, which is this month, and some of us are wearing our pink.
Real men wear pink, Mr. Mayor.
That's right, real men wear pink. And so want to recognize that, but we also want to recognize domestic violence awareness as well, because that too is, is, is recognized this month, and that color is purple. So we just want to remember those who are survivors and also remember those who may not have survived on this side but made it over to the other side and are surviving and thriving in heaven. And finally, we need to vote. Souls to the Polls is on all weekend, a lot of different activities going on this weekend that's leading up to the election. And so on Sunday, we're, we're doing a walk from Belto Missionary Baptist Church to the Civic Center. You do not have to walk. You can drive through and put your ballot in the drop box. So just want to encourage people to participate wherever you can. Did that matter who you vote for? I don't care. Just let's do our civic duty, and that's all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. Commissioner Richardson?
Well, you know, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been checking off my list.
I know, I know, I know.
The Mayor Pro Tem has taken everything I had to say. That's okay, that's, I would just ditto those issues. And the one thing I wanted to share with you all, Pastor Mandrell had a group of us on her radio show yesterday, caregivers of, of breast cancer, cancer generally, and it was, it was. on her radio show yesterday, caregivers of breast cancer, cancer generally, and it was a phenomenal program, because, you know, and I was one of the panelists. My wife was diagnosed with breast cancer a little over four years ago, and I described it as a gut punch when she called me and told me that that was her diagnosis. My wife had been the picture of health up until that point. And so, you know, we talked about the things that we had gone through as a couple, as a family, what we went through as the caregivers, because there was so much involved. And Reverend Davis's, Tuanda Davis's husband, Chris, was one of the panelists as well. And it was phenomenal. And one of the things that came out of that, we are going to look at forming a support group for men generally, but particularly African-American men who are caregivers. Because when I, when my wife and I were going through it, you know, we had the support of the American Cancer Society, but we didn't have that caregiver support. I mean, I didn't know who to turn to, you know, for advice and consult as I was supporting my wife through that process. And so that was one of the things that came out of that, and so I wanted to share that with you all as well. Voting, of course, there is no question that that is paramount this year for so many reasons. And so we encourage any and everyone who is of age and is registered to vote to exercise that most basic of rights of citizens in our democracy, to elect those persons that will, of course, represent you in all levels of government. And then the one last thing, Mr. Mayor, that I wanted to ask, the Race Relations Summit that we have, and of course, the city has been sponsoring that for a number of years now, and I'm so happy that we're able to continue it even virtually. It shows our commitment to addressing those issues in our community, and I think we've made considerable progress, but as we all know, there's still a ways to go. And I guess the question that I had was, the Human Relations Commission, will they then in the future be involved in the planning and implementation of this event?
I think yes. That is exactly my line of thinking, and there is an extremely positive leadership role for them to play.
Right, okay. All right. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much.
Great.
Thank you, Madam Pro Tem.
Commissioner Matlow?
Nothing tonight, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Bryant?
I really have to say ditto, but anyway, I'm glad your list was checked off, Commissioner Richardson, because mine was too, by the Mayor Pro Tem. I'm so excited about the Relations, Race Relations Summit tomorrow, and especially the speakers. I can remember studying, actually seeing the experiment that Jane Elliott did, and to know that today, if we were to do the same experiment, like I saw this in the results of another summit, that the results not only are similar, but they are the same. Can hardly wait to hear that discussion on tomorrow. So I won't go over the other Souls to the Poles and the other things that have been said, but I will say that on Saturday, there are several options for people in our community to go and pick up food. One is at the Bethel Church. There is a group that's traveling all over the United States through the faith-based community, being sponsored through them, and in Tallahassee, it is being done on this Saturday at the Bethel Church in the parking lot in front of the church. So we invite, obviously, the public to feel free to come by and pick up boxes of food. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. I also am looking forward to the Race Relations Summit. It's going to be fantastic. I also, in recognition of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, want to recognize my mother, who is a two-time breast cancer survivor, after being a caregiver to my father, who died of pancreatic cancer.
Oh, my goodness.
She is one of the strongest, most amazing women I know, hands down. I too want to remind everybody to get out and vote. We could talk for hours of the importance of this election. I also want to compliment Mark earlier, our supervisor of elections, for a job well-done with his team, I think to the point that we kind of take it for granted how well his team executes the elections in our community in advance. Very appreciative. Two more things. Number one, I really want to thank our staff for an incredible meeting. This has been wonderful for the social distancing, all the logistics that have been going on outside of City Hall, screening everyone coming in, getting people in in a timely manner, having virtual testimony and in-person testimony and audible testimony on the phone. I'm curious to know if there is another municipality in the state of Florida that has moved this fast, this far, at this point in coming back into meetings. I am very proud of our team, and I think that we've done an absolutely fantastic job. And finally, I want to wish everybody Happy Halloween. Let's be smart, let's be safe, but let's have fun as well. So colleagues, we have a public hearing at 6 o'clock. We only have one item. We'll check to see if any of our un-agenda business item speakers have joined us, but as of right now, we are in recess till 6 o'clock this evening, which is 45 minutes. At 6 o'clock, I'd like to call the City Commission meeting back into order for the public hearing that has been previously scheduled. We are on item number 17.01, Mr. City Manager.
Madam Attorney.
Excuse me, Madam Attorney.
Item number 17.01 is a public hearing on Resolution Number 20-R-43, a resolution abandoning a portion of right-of-way located on the east side of Payne Street near Harper Street in the Sea of Tallahassee, Leon County, Florida. Are there any?
All right, we have heard from public comment on this item. Is there anyone else here to speak on this item?
There is no additional speaker, Mayor.
No additional speakers whatsoever. Turn it to Commission Action.
Move it, move staff recommendation.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem for staff recommendation.
I got it.
I got a second, a second, and a second. We'll give Commissioner Richardson for the official. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, passes unanimously 5-0. Before we gavel out, let's just check one last time, since this is the first meeting that we have done this. Mr. Cook, do we have anybody online or in person for un-agenda speak, un-agenda items speakers for today?
On the un-ag, on the un-agenda, I am, I do not have anyone who is still here in person, and I have not heard any indication that those un-agenda speakers from earlier are connected at this point. We heard from Ms. Danton, and I'm not aware of any other speakers.
We have no more speakers. We have no more business coming for the City Commission. Ladies and gentlemen, we stand adjourned.
You're clear.